City council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM September 15th, it'll all come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Koyvenen?
Here.
Councilor Lillis?
Here.
Councilor Hadrava?
Here.
Mayor Vysalovich?
Here.
Approval of the minutes, City Council Workshop, August 11th. Approval of minutes, City Council Workshop, August 25th. Approval of minutes, City Council Workshop, September 5th. And approval of minutes, City Council Meeting, September 1st. No one has any changes or additions? Call for motion, and we approve these minutes as they are printed?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda, we have under new business, we do have, okay, item 15 is on J-15. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Or anything under new business, anything to add or delete? If not...
Were we considering J-16, Mayor, with regard to the former Finger Hut property and resolution in concept, or whatever the terminology would be, to move ahead to help or assist in whatever fashion we can?
How are we gonna word that? Just about how... Well, I'll let you...
You said that just right. I think we should let Councilor Lillis say just what he said for 16.
That would allow you and Dave to work on the project and write.
We still would, yes.
Well, I think 16 is the basic part of it, is to go on and get the purchase order done, and then, and finish that, right? And then, we'd like to do a motion of support for Bart.
For relocation.
And put him on a fast track.
Put him on a fast track to be going... This is gonna be a kind of a wild ride, but I think it'll work out. I think it'll be just fine. Okay, do I have a motion that we approve the new business with addition of item J-16?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have anybody from the audience who'd like to address the council at this time? If not, I will allow time at the end. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is approval of payroll, August 16 through 34th, or 31st.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. No public hearings, no unfinished business, we'll start new business, item J-1, resolution adopting proposed tax for year 2016. The total tax levy, $1,549,173. No one has any questions? Call for a motion that we adopt this resolution? When do we have to have this in by, Jackie? Is it...
September 30th.
Oh, okay. I thought it was today.
I'll make that motion that we accept this.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Koyvenen, any further discussion?
Just like to comment for the public's sake that this is a preliminary levy, that we will be working on the budget going forward here, in an earnest attempt to reduce the amount by the end of the year.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item 2, set date for public hearing to discuss proposed budget and tax for 2016. Has to be between November 25th and December 28th?
So the council meeting's December 1st and the 15th, and I think we've done it on that off week, like the week of the 7th.
We should have, we used to have it at the Hall of Fame because of the handicapped accessibility. Wonder if the auditorium would be ready? I don't know.
Mike?
Mike?
Let's ask that question.
Well, we should, we have the lighting in place now, and we have the heating, and we should have restrooms. Hopefully we were...
I think that would be nice, and break everybody into it.
There you go, I agree.
So if you could make that your motion, because when I certify the state to the county, you need to put the location on there, that'd be nice.
Do we have tables and chairs?
I'll have tables and chairs.
What date, Jackie, do you think in December?
I think December 7th?
8th.
8th, is that a Tuesday, 8th?
8th is a Tuesday. Yeah. We'll set the public hearing for December 8th at the city auditorium.
At what time, 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM. Does that work for everybody? Any further discussion on the hearing? Not, can I have a motion that we make this official?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have support?
I'll support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 3, purchase agreement for property at 1250 Industrial Park Drive, Evlith, known as former Finger Hut property. Call for motion that we do enter into a purchase agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Number 4, letter of intent to lease property at 1250 Industrial Park Drive, Evlith, Minnesota, State of Minnesota Department of Transportation lease.
I don't have anything, I thought something was gonna come.
So we don't have to do anything on that one? Donation request for arrangemental health, and our legal expert says it's okay to do something there, Bonnie?
Yes, as long as the donation comes from your charitable gambling fund, because this is a 501(c)(3) business, then it's okay.
Okay. Anybody have any idea, kind of an amount? Thinking of...
Well, we discussed it a little bit, and we feel that maybe a hundred dollar donation would be alright with us, out of charitable gambling fund.
Maybe we should tell them what we're doing with it, Mayor.
Go ahead.
It says the 4th Annual Project Warmth, Friday, October 9th, 2015, 5:00 PM, Elks, Virginia Elks Club. It is a fundraiser for arrangemental health, blankets, hats, mittens, drive, and if you can make it, please make it, please make it a good thing. See if we can get it in. Close, anyway.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 6, recommendation for charter commission regarding city charter amendment. And Jackie, what does that basically involve, our bonding ability?
Yes, I'm gonna summon Dave Sleen up to the podium, and he's gonna give you the short version.
Yeah, I thought there was.
Well, I don't think that we did.
No, I don't think we did, we just said that we would donate a hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, and who's...
I'll support that, Mayor.
Support by Hadrava, because I know everybody voted yes.
This is the change to the charter commission that we talked about, to facilitate bonding for those projects that did not fit within the framework of the assessment policy, and city improvements for streets, curbs, utilities, those, it's limited to that. It's a modification that allows you to issue those bonds without a public referendum for those limited items that do not meet the assessment criteria.
It does not include any public buildings or things like that.
Yeah, it's a very restrictive change, actually, when we did this change, I went to Mike and asked him to give me a definition from his perspective of what it is that meets the criteria for the assessment policy issues, and we used that very limited and restrictive definition.
I know we talked about this for some time.
Yeah, we did.
It was nice the charter commission could assemble, and get that done for us. Any further questions? If not, we call for a motion that we approve this change? So moved. Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Quotation for Overhead Door Company of Hibbing for new overhead doors at the fire hall, an amount of $11,930 and no cents. They might have, is the chief here? Did you have to put a bigger opening there, or...
No, no bigger opening.
The doors they had there, we were down there and looked at it, they needed to be replaced, so I think that was like four months ago?
Me, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Because I was wondering, that new truck, they said might have a little trouble, I don't know if that helps that situation.
I don't think it does, but given the condition of the, particularly the operating parts of the doors that are there, we need to...
Warped.
We need to replace them.
I think they came with the bricks.
Definitely served their life expectancy.
Okay. We had a motion that we approve the quotation from Overhead Door of Hibbing for these doors?
So moved.
Made by Lillis, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Quotations for personal protective equipment for firefighters, an amount of $1,475. Didn't we, wasn't there more to this?
Yeah, I think the actual amount is probably more around $20,650.
This individual, yeah, because I thought we were talking more money than this, $20,650?
But you budgeted $25,000.
On his back page...
Oh, his boot cost, okay, the total's over here, I was wondering.
On the back page, I got 26,120.
26, okay, that's kind of what I remember.
That would be the high bid. And the second, the low bid would be...
This is the boot cost here, okay. $20,650.75.
I can see where that threw us, too, because it talks about a boot cost.
Yeah, I was kinda looking at this.
Boot cost is a portion of the total, apparently.
Yeah, because I thought we talked about a lot more than that, though, for equipment. Alright, we got that cleared up.
The chief is recommending you accept a quote from him, by your safety, USA.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? If not, call for a motion that we accept the quotation? So moved. Motion made by Koyvenen, we have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 9, quotation for carpet replacement at the fire hall, amount of $5,867.20. Man, you were right, Tim, they're getting all the good stuff.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Wow.
Can we still have that clock?
Well, I'm assuming that's been there for like 30 years, too.
No.
We were up there for that safety meeting, and, yeah, it's not good. It's pretty ugly.
Well, somebody want to make a motion that we spruce up the old place?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 10, approve the sale of 1989 Pierce fire truck to embarrass regional volunteer fire department, amount of $10,000 bucks. Nice to see that thing gone. Anybody have any comments or anything? I don't know much about fire trucks, but...
I had one question, perhaps Jackie could answer, the funds for that would go directly into the general fund?
Wasn't that the...
So, I think it's been into what we call general fund miscellaneous, which is a catch-all for some, you know, everything else that's not defined, and then it's up to you whether you decide you want that money, that can be something for the fire department, time being a little beck and general funds.
Well, we just spent a lot of money on the fire department, maybe we should just replenish our fund.
It would pay for the carpeting.
I thought, you know, somewhere in our discussions, I thought once we bought the new truck, whatever they got for the old one was going for equipment or something, but that's here nor there.
Same pot.
That's all I asked for.
Same pot.
Yeah, that's fair. I hope that truck gives them as much help as it gave us in the past, so it was a good truck.
Yes, it was. Yeah, it is. Do we have a motion, Steph, and a support? Who wants to make the motion to get rid of this thing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 11, consider approving change order number 2 for city auditorium main level restrooms renovation.
This was pretty ugly down there, wasn't it, Mike? When they had to go in there and...
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken?
Yes, this was actually to replace a split cast iron sewer drain on, below the west bathroom, and some corroded galvanized sewer drains in the east bathroom. I think I touched on this at the last meeting, that we knew this was coming. Actually, the bigger pipe for the west bathroom was split from ceiling to floor in the basement, and they had to actually hammer up the concrete floor by foot pipe. The other, in the east bathroom, it was galvanized pipe in the wall. Instead of trying to break into that wall and repair it, there was kind of a small, like four or five inch offset in that wall, so we were able to have them replumb, and then there was another change order for general construction to fur that wall out, so now it's, the east wall is what continues, wall, I guess, instead of having to jog it. So that worked out actually, but a few bucks for the repairs, but again, you can't see behind walls are underground, and that's kind of what we ran into.
Well, it's an old building.
Yeah.
Okay, that one is 4835. We have a motion that we approve. Change order number 2, so moved. Made by Koyvenen, we have a support?
I'll support that.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 12, consider approving pay request number 1 for city auditorium main level restrooms renovation, amount of $21,645.75. Finally coming together, little by little. No one has any questions? Can I call for a motion that we approve that pay request also?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 13, consider approving change order number 1 for cleaning, repairing, and painting 200,000 gallon elevated water tower. That is our west Evlith tank, that's change order number 1. Holy man.
Very seldom do we ever get something back to us, we're gonna start calling these people change orders. I mean, a bid is a bid.
That's usually was an old, little bidding trick, you had a whole bunch of change orders. And that was increased by $5,750. Was that for the west in Evlith?
That was for the new logo, yes. They had to have...
Well, they really like it out there, so that being said, I'll make the motion.
Yes, they do, they really like it out there.
They do, it looks nice.
Hey, that's community history we made of that one.
Yeah, I mean, they do. I'm sure somebody doesn't, but most of them do.
They call for a motion that we accept the change order number 1?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item 14, consider approving pay request 3, the final for cleaning, painting, repairing 200,000 gallon elevated water tower, amount of... Over here. And we're done for another 20 years, Mike?
Yes, at least 20, I certainly hope it'll be longer than that.
That's good, we'll all be gone for the next go around.
Well, I've heard some good compliments on the company and their professionalism, and the nice way they kept their worksite, and the way everything went out there, so...
They were, they were all business, they came and got it done.
I will make that motion to pay them.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a second?
I'll support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item J-15, appointment to Assistant Public Works Director, and that will be Scott Smith at pay level step 3 at that position. You know, that was a tough interview, and you know, you've got over 100 years of experience there.
I was gonna say, you guys did a good job, because you had a lot of qualified candidates for that, and that would have been a tough one to pick.
It is a tough one, it's nice that you could do this internally.
Yep.
You got enough qualified people, you didn't have to go outside. No, it was a tough situation, you had a lot of experience.
City's very fortunate to have the quality of staff that we do, and I know we very much appreciated the fact that five people applied for that particular position from our own bargaining unit, so that's wonderful. Compliments to those folks, every one of them. Be nice to pick all five, but we only had one position that we could fill, so...
No, we had five good ones there, and so, you know, it is a compliment to the staff that you have that option, instead of having to go outside, just to keep efficiency up in the department. Now, can I have a motion that we accept their recommendation from the hiring committee?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support? Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion?
Mayor, just a point of interest that we would be putting off a start, an official start date at this time, expect we'll have some further information at one of the next meetings to firm the start date up.
Maybe Michael decided to stay.
Do we have to post...
I got to look, I don't think so.
Do we have to put in this motion to maybe amend it, the post for the vacant position, or what do you think, Mike?
That would be excellent, Mayor, in fact, I was gonna bring that up at the roundtable, because I forgot to get that on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So if you would consider that, we'll, if it's post internally and externally as needed, that'll keep the process moving, so...
I'll certainly amend my emotions.
To include that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item J-16, you've got, who's got the best memory now?
I think Brad said it very well.
I don't like the way Councilor Lillis said it, but...
Well, I guess the whole, maybe I'll start with a little bit of ad lib, you know, the council desires to support the efforts of Two Rivers Auction, and I guess the purpose of this motion would be to simply make it a matter of record that the council does support the efforts of Two Rivers Auction, or the business of Two Rivers Auction, given the environment that we're currently in with regard to, you know, the pace of agreements and the needs for the facility, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I would like to make a motion to officially show support, to authorize the appropriate city entities to do their very best to fast-track this whole process.
This includes, I think, more than one business, because we're looking at relocation to new building?
Yeah.
That's why we were doing this, to speed up the whole process? Allow city staff to...
Yeah, the city's dealing with Bart Kite of Two Rivers Auction, and he sublets to three other businesses, so it's kind of on a fast track to get another building up and rolling, so nobody gets affected by it. And bypassing this, it's showing our support that we're gonna move it as fast as we can.
Well, it's, it's our whole plan to develop the industrial park, and we have businesses that we can relocate there, working with us on that, and soften the blow a little bit till we get that going. Any further discussion?
I will second that motion.
Second that motion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Anybody have any committee reports or commission reports? Just one, what can we...
Vote to put Brian on, since he's missing. We gotta get him for something. He's up on that scaffold painting. I think Jackie should tell him he's painting his house the wrong color, it's not in his city code, he has to redo it. Nope, I have nothing.
Brian, do you have anything to add?
No, sure.
Bradley?
Well, I didn't make it to the roller derby, but our hippodrome and our town was packed with cars and people, and I would like to just say thank you to the Dirty Oars in putting on the big show, and it was a lot of fun.
It was a lot, that was exciting. Something different, that's what people are taking real big interest with, using the facility, that's why it pays so much to keep...
Well, you know, it was something that when it came to us, to ask us, and I bet you'll remember this, when they asked to use the auditorium, and we said, this is either gonna be really funny, or it's gonna be a great thing, and guess what? It's turning out to be a great thing. So goes back to what I said, remember roller derby on Saturday nights at 10:30? It's coming back.
We had people from Grand Rapids, one guy from the Falls, team though, because they've never really seen it firsthand, just on TV. It was interesting to draw. It's nice to see that building used.
One more thing, Mayor, if you don't mind, sir. I'd like to make sure everybody understands that our Evlith Gilbert Golden Bears football team is undefeated, and they are playing Two Harbors on Friday night, and please, everybody show up and show your support. Now I'm done.
Done bragging.
Yes.
I really don't have much to add, other than when our LE cleanup starts with Monday, Mike?
Yes, next Monday, four weeks, weeks 1 and 4, we're open from 7:00 until 3:30. Weeks 2 and 3, we're open from 7:00 until 6:00 PM. Yard waste cleanup starts on October 12th.
Right. Tim, you got anything to add?
Mayor and council, it is with a heavy heart that I need to bring this up, but October 1st is quickly approaching.
Oh, no.
And with that comes calendar parking. What I'm holding up, we're gonna be a little lenient to begin the October reminding residents to start, you might see a little warning on your windshield, but that will only last for a short time, so we're just asking the public to be diligent and start parking on the correct sides. If you have any questions, please call the police department, myself, or one of my officers will be glad to explain it. Thank you.
Just a little bit of an add-on to that, if you don't mind, you know, the public, I hope, or majority of the public should be aware already, but for those that aren't aware, this calendar parking is a necessary evil, it definitely is something that we need to have, and hopefully followed religiously, because this is how, this enables our public works people to adequately clean our streets and so forth, and it's particularly important, even if the snow is not on the ground, there's a bunch of different activities that take place in the fall and in the spring that need to be enabled by this parking, so I just would hope that the public would keep that in mind and park accordingly.
We used to start this on November 1st, and everybody remembers the Halloween snowstorm boy. That's why we do it October 1st, because we had a mess, three feet of snow and cars parked all over the place.
1991.
Yeah, that was an ugly winter, I'll tell you that. Lot of calls, people couldn't even get out of the house, doors were snowed in, you know, had to compliment the city crew, they were shoveling people's doorways out, and personal vehicles running, get prescriptions, things like that. You know, everybody got together, and we got through it, and got through it, no problems. But Rod, do you have anything to bring up?
Only that your San Francisco Sewer Project is starting this week, and so we will see some traffic rerouting. Scheduled to get on to the project, stay on full time.
Jackie, you have anything to add?
Thank you.
Bonnie?
No, Mayor.
Nobody suing us yet, or what?
No.
Okay. Steph, you got anything to add? Mike, you only got two more shots to say something.
I just have two brief...
I just want to remind you...
Two brief items here.
Okay.
Your stain? Click your stain. No, I don't want to ruin your day. No, I don't wanna ruin your day, I'll tell you that, so. But auditorium update very, very briefly, the the plumbing and the electrical rough-ins has all been completed, and the bulk of the sheet rock and and taping work has been completed. We we were being told next week and the week after that we're gonna see ceramic tile going in, painting being completed, water service installed, and fixtures to start being installed, the rest room, so things are moving along, I think, the next couple of weeks. We're gonna really see it come together. One other thing I had was I got a call the other day from K L M Engineering, who was benchmark engineering sub consultant on the west Evlith water tower, and they received or they were contacted by one of their sub consultants who has a drone, and they want to fly eight water towers that K L M has worked on around the state, including our west Evlith. They might want to be up here, it sounds like maybe this week, just to fly around our tower and take some pictures. So, that should be fine, but if they hit the tower and damage it, they're responsible for the footing. So, you see a drone in that area, that's the intent.
Well, if they're gonna advertise, if they're gonna advertise on our behalf, then we should get that fifty-six hundred back.
It's got a chance, west Evlith, it's got a chance of getting shot down.
Yeah, big time. Bird season's coming, you're looking at a raccoon on the corner.
I'd like to see get some of the footage if possible, and you see, I think it would be interesting.
Oh, yeah, that can happen. I don't have anything further, anyone from the audience have anything to address the council with? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.